That UKG agreement, that's.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
It is already, and we'll leave it up to the board and how you want to proceed with that.
Yeah, we'll just dialogue it. I think.
Yeah.
Do it.
I think, I think I'd like that as well.
All right, we're gonna stand for the pledge. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Before we get started, I wanna do a shout out to our snowplow drivers and all the snowplow drivers at the state and townships and the city. Unfortunately, we're looking for another round tonight. Hopefully, it goes either north or south of us, but sometimes we forget how much, how valuable or how much these guys are putting in, men and women, and we think this should be a 24/7 job for them and they have lives and we forget that. We just expect those roads to be clean when we wanna go and just wanna say thank you to all those plow drivers out there keeping us safe and roads clear and with this wind and a little bit of snow dusting and it plugs up everything and it's just been kind of a miserable end of the winter. So hopefully, we can get some warm weather. So with that agenda, we have a couple of things to add.
Yes, Commissioner and Board, with your permission, under license list, we would like to add Resolution Number 03232G, which is a Minnesota lawful gambling resolution that was brought to our attention recently. And then also with the Board's permission, at the end of the Board meeting prior to adjournment, closed session, a motion to go into closed session meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13DL5, so Division 3B, based on attorney-client privilege.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda?
Hope they approve the changes.
Okay, motion by John. Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Minutes? Anyone have anything? I had a couple of things, if I can get to my pages here. John, did you have anything?
Nothing really. The votes were changed.
On page two of six, under County Administrator, with all those ARPA, yeah, it does say highway project quotes. I was just, although, you know, there's a lot of things purchased there and I just, it does say highway. Maybe just say the following are all highway projects and with low quotes being taken. To kinda reiterate that those are all highway projects.
I had one typo on page five of six. What's the abbreviation for township? Is it TWP or TWN?
TWP.
So on the second dot, second bullet, there's a TWN.
Oh, yep.
I think on page four of six, towards the bottom, when it talks about motion second to add the Minnesota Landfill Coalition Agreement, was that to approve? Supposed to be approve instead of add? Cause I couldn't figure out what we're adding it to.
Just approve it.
Or saying to prove. Anything else? I think. Is that it?
Thanks.
I think so. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Erica.
Well, second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Open forum. Nobody signed up? Nothing? Okay, moving on to reports and correspondence. Anyone wish to start, or I think I had a couple of meetings. John and I had a couple highway public works facility updates. Everything's going on schedule. I think Pat had talked to Brant Bristland and we kinda determined we need more than custodial help instead of, it's more of a maintenance, cause there's a lot of a lot of things in there that have to be checked continuously and monitored, especially for warranty, just kinda like the jail. So, we're gonna look into, look into how we manage that, those checkups rather than, it's more than just custodial. And I think with Jim, Jim and Brent will maybe have to figure out how to coordinate all that, but. Another thing, I went to the 75th anniversary of the Soil and Water. It was a really full house and really good presentation and it was a, they had a nice history lesson there and if you're interested in a book, they have a book with some history and these were handed out and I'm sure they have some extra on. So if anyone's interested in the history of the Soil and Water, it's a nice little keepsake. I think I had one other meeting, but I was pretty quiet this week. Anyone else have?
We, Dave and I had Human Services. I just wanted to mention that the supervisors over there said that they had a lot of employees come to them that really appreciated the employee recognition and really appreciated what you had said Barry is that, you know, we maybe haven't gotten it all right, always right, but we're working on it. So that was mentioned by many employees. Then I attended the Northwest Dental Access Stakeholder Meeting. They're moving along with securing funding and land to build the dental clinic in Frazee. So, they're looking at possibly a temporary building in the town. And then we had our EDA meeting. We discussed the EDA specialist position and we also discussed reviewing our resolution and kinda coming up with what we want as our vision for our EDA. And then we just had our zoning ordinance review yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I gotta, I'll just add to the Human Services. We also, right at the end of the meeting, we also talked about what we could do to better the employee recognition. And a couple of things they came up with was more timely, which means maybe twice a year instead of just once a year because there's different, you know, hire dates and stuff. So you get more of those. And then maybe have a larger, one, once a year larger meeting that everybody's invited to and then the people that are being recognized, their meals paid for and the other people pay for their meal or something, something around that way. Just to get everybody there, maybe find a facility that's large enough for that. Or some kind of recognition slash, I don't know, no better word, Christmas party, something like that.
We did, in the past, we've done the Christmas parties in January or and that's when we recognized them. And I don't think we paid for the meals at that time, but I think that would be certainly something to consider.
And I think even, they suggested even just paying for those that are
Right.
recognized.
Yep, and then everything else that's on, is on the agenda.
I know at Lakeland, Lakeland Mental Health, we went out for lunch as a group of, that was being recognized and their lunch was paid for. So, not as many employees, obviously.
Then I went to the Dancing Sky Area Aging, Agency of Aging meeting yesterday at Inman Omen, and I learned a lot. So, I didn't know there was a whole operation that went through the whole state. There's six agencies in the state of Minnesota that are funded by the federal government for aging. And ours, in our area, our 21 county area is called Dancing Sky. You guys, some of you guys probably know that from previous, maybe when Ben reported stuff. But anyway, this is funded by the Older American Act. And what happens is the money goes, the money then goes to a federal agency called the, let me find it here. Called the Administration for Community Living. And then the money then is distributed to the states, the Minnesota Board of Aging. And then the Minnesota Board of Aging distributes the money to the six organizations in the state of Minnesota. And it's divided up geographically. We're in the northwest region with 21 counties. There's a central region, there's a northeast, there's a southwest and a southeast. They don't all call that, but ours is called Dancing Sky. And anyway, so that act, one of the issues that they had in this meeting was that money from the federal government has not changed in 20 years. It's been the same. So, they have proposed a $20 million request, $10 million for the next two years from the federal government to increase that funding. And their main, the main thing they spend money on is nutrition or mainly meals for elderly people, 60-plus people. So, they want to be able, they figured that since the federal government just passed a $400 million bill to fund all this, feeding all the kids in school, the 20 million would be very minimal. So, they're hoping that goes. The other, one of the other big concerns they had, and this is just to, and they wanted me to inform everybody that the funding for the, they're all, they fund, they're all funded by grants, from the grant from the state, from the federal government. And then what this Dancing Sky does, then contracts through grants, local organizations to do all these services. And what, the money is then earmarked in a percentage by categories. One of the categories is if you're 60-plus years old, then right, currently, right now, the proposal is to send 30% of the money to every, to all these areas in the state that have, the number of 60-plus people is one of the areas. Well, what that will do, that's an increase of 10%, before it was 20%. Well, that'll do, will decrease the amount of money that goes to rural Minnesota counties or outstate counties to 15% from 25%. So that's going to decrease their budget by, they estimated between $150,000 and $160,000. That's a lot of money. So, if that happens, the metro area is going to get more money because they have more people and then the rural areas are gonna get less money. And their rationale for this, for not doing that is there are more things that rural, we have to do in rural Minnesota to get meals to people, to get services to people, because we have, there's way more travel. And one thing that I didn't think of, and I had a mother with dementia too, so I understand. And one of the things that is very problematic is that some, in these rural areas, they might go to a facility maybe twice a week to get a meal. The other times, the meal is brought to them. That might be the only time, twice a week or once a week, that they see anybody. If you live in the metro area, you see somebody every day. So, mental health is a big issue. You can't really measure that, but that's a big issue. So, what they're doing is in April, as soon as this, all of this information comes out, it's going to go out on the Minnesota Boarding Age, Minnesota Board of Aging website, and I do have the website here. In April, and then it's going to be put out for public comment. So anybody can make a comment on what they think it should be and after all these public comments are made, then they're going to finalize what their proposal, what they're going to, how they're going to distribute the money. So the Dancing Sky people want us to represent our area and say, hey, we want 30% to go to, or 25% to go to rural Minnesota instead of 30% going to just people that are 60-plus. I mean, obviously, rural Minnesota gets the 60-plus part too, but we don't have as many people, that's the problem. So that was a long process that I just explained that. And then John and I went to the Hardin Trail meeting. And you can add whatever you want here, John, too, but the trail to, from Frazee, from Frazee to Detroit Lakes is in progress, or going to be in progress. There's no final design by Houston Engineering yet, because they are waiting to make sure we have the funding set by, if they get the funding set by July 1st, then they should be able to start this fall. The cost has gone up 10 to 20%, but they're still very confident they have enough money. Okay? There is a bonding bill that is going through the legislature. And in order for this bonding bill to, if this, so they wanna add other segments to this trail, coming out of Parker Rapids, coming out of Moorhead, maybe going north to Atasca. And in order for the bonding bill to pass, the bonding bill doesn't pass, these segments won't happen. So, they need that, they need that to happen in the legislature. I think they're pretty confident that it will, but that's a big issue that they're concerned with. Oh, and then there was one issue. Whenever you have a trail next to a highway and it's too close to the highway and it's in the right of way of the highway, the DOT has the rights to decide if it's a one-way or a two-way. So, currently, right now, it's going to be a one-way trail, two from Frazee to Detroit Lakes, which is somewhat of an issue, because if you get there, then you can't get back on the trail.
How are they gonna monitor a bike going?
Yeah, that's snowmobile.
That's snowmobile, only with headlights.
Wow.
Because of the lights coming out on, coming traffic at night, yeah. Yeah, so it's not as, yeah. So there's a possibility, there's two options. They could build a trail on the other side or they could, they're still in conversation with the DOT to try to see if they can work out an arrangement. But it's only headlight vehicles.
Yeah, how do you, how do you tell, I mean, who's gonna know that? If you're out on Stoneville.
I don't know.
And how do you get back into town then if you're, or come?
Well, I think that, that portion of trail that's left unfinished out of Frazee from the bridge that goes nowhere to end of Frazee, we have the funding for it, it's just the verbiage was wrong and the bonding bill said, nothing about construct, just design, but we had several million dollars for design. So we're just waiting for the bonding bill to clear that up.
Does that trail go up to the overpass? Is that where it all?
It'll go just about the Eagle, or Eagle Lake part.
Oh, okay.
The big Turkey.
Okay.
Yeah, the big Turkey.
So. Add to that, I had Northwest Emergency Communication Board, not a lot, we had to meet in person because there was some training afterwards, but mainly what we come up with is each member's needs for the coming. Shane, you can probably help me out on, as you did a lot of the work on compiling costs, what it's gonna take to maintain our armor system, now that we have it. And there's quite a bit of needs out there. It's just to try to move that forward, to get some funding to help replace all this equipment and technology that changes all the time, so. And then also, there was a lot of support for the southwest region. A lot of our funding that we get probably doesn't get used up in the time it's supposed to. And that goes into a, doesn't go back to the general fund, but it goes into another fund and it's very hard to get that money out of there. What we're proposing is to be able to access that funding. Say, northwest region, we had 100,000 we didn't use during the period. It goes into this fund. We have some needs, we can go back in there and draw that out. Or it comes back in the northwest region to hold. And I attended, the day after that, I attended the State Finance Communication Board, which I'm on, and I brought that forward. And I know the chairman, there is not, oh, support of it. He kinda cut me off a little short at the end and I was gonna make a few more comments when he adjourned the meeting. So, at least we're forwarding a letter to the state on that. And we had the airport, also, it's on the agenda today, mainly has to do with the fuel system upgrade and the parking lot improvement. And then some discussion on the old hangar demo and like that. Kelsey's here today to answer any questions, so. Will help.
Okay.
I had highway with John and not much there. We looked at purchasing a couple new pickups and weed spraying contract. EDA with Jess or Erica, so nothing to add there. I was at West Central Initiative. We're talking about green energy there. And there's a lot of that going on, very expensive. Not a lot of answers there. I went on this Clean Air Real-Time site. Have you, any guys looked at this? You could see what our air quality is here. And surprisingly, the USA was very clean, you know, China and some of those places over there, the dark purple is hazardous to even in Frazee. So.
Yeah, if you remember the Olympics, they had to really clean some stuff up for it to be
Yeah.
livable.
So if anybody wants to know where, you know, if there is global warming and, you know, I'm not saying there is or isn't, there certainly could be, but if you wanna know where it's coming from, look at that, look at that Clean Air site there. And then I did go to a town hall meeting and, on Sunday. And they talked about, you know, gun rights and education and clean air and the cost of energy in the future. And a lot of concerned people, a lot of questions. They had to actually stop people from asking questions. And I would recommend people go to, go to these meetings. If you get a chance to go to a town hall meeting, go there and find out what's going on. And then talk about it, because there is a lot of changes coming and if you're not happy with what's coming, there are ways to fight it before it gets here, but you have to pay attention and talk to people. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else under reports and correspondence? Pat, do you have anything coming up? Any any legislative or AMC, anything? Or we, we had our
I understand, but you know, the Board approved that Commissioner at the beginning of the year. And then you also selected some alternatives that our department is in case
Yeah.
a Commissioner aren't able to attend.
I think at our last meeting, we discussed drafting a letter for us all to sign regarding this, the Second Amendment, or regarding the bills being proposed about the Second Amendment. Where are we with getting that?
It's actually, my clerical staff person is just finalizing
Okay.
edits. Our plan was to provide that to you here at the end of the Board meeting for you to sign.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so we can review that letter and send that to all our legislators and
Yep.
that's our, that's our however we word it, but it has to do with the Second Amendment and protecting our rights.
Well, and again, Commissioner Nelson, what was discussed was to use the sheriff's
Yep.
letter. So, we had to wait till we received that. We received that just a couple days ago, so we're editing that and they'll be ready for you to sign here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, moving on, no more reports, correspondence, appointments? Any appointments?
I do have a couple. Karen Malari is up for a reappointment on the EDA Board, so I would like to make a recommendation for her.
Is that a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And then one more, Steve Lindau, who lives in Borse Township, has contacted me and is interested in serving on the Planning Commission for District One, which is, has an opening. So I would make a motion to appoint Steve Lindau to the Planning Commission.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Well, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Any other appointments? I'd like to make an appointment to Planning and Zoning, Kim Mattson. I make that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Abby Anderson to EDA.
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is EDA appointments up to? Are they all current then? Okay. Kyle, are we all current then with everyone current? If not, send the Commissioner probably a note to say there's another appointment. Okay. Okay, no more appointments? Tony Administrator?
Thank you. Just a few items. It was talked about the benefits that we, sorry, the recognition event. We also, as staff, received a lot of positive feedback from individuals and I wanna make sure the Board's aware and the public's aware that the recognition we did recently, of which all the Commissioners attended and shook everyone's hand, we took photos of everyone was, for the last three years. So we did a 2020, a 2021, and 2022 recognition. And that really had to do with COVID, really putting a kink in sort of the, kind of the annual recognition process. We did talk a lot about doing an annual event in December. In fact, we spoke to Department Eds for that. But we felt, based on input from Department Eds, there were a lot of people that weren't going to be around, they were gonna be on holiday. So we thought we would hold off until the time that we did do it. We will be looking at an annual event, proposing that to the Board and looking around the end of the year, cause that's typically what we have counties do. But we did get a very favorable response on that. The online auction is going well. It goes till Wednesday. Certainly, people are really getting competitive on the bidding and but we do appreciate everyone that provided products to bid on. And again, the goal, we have a certain goal in mind and we're gonna be, I think, close to reaching that goal.
Pat, just to remind everyone, that is donated items from the Board and all staff. These are all funds that are gonna be donated back then to the food pantry and for March.
We're excited to see that we're really rejuvenating a lot of these events committees, getting a lot more people on them. And so you're gonna see a lot more events besides the ones we just mentioned for
I will, I will say that we could do well if we just had John's honey up for sale. We could, holy mackerel, that stuff is going crazy.
Maple syrup.
Or maple syrup, sorry.
Go on, go, it's like, it's like
He is selling that up a storm.
It's the labeling.
The collector's jars, maybe.
On the legislative letter, we already talked about, you know, EDA, I know it was touched on a little bit, what we're really attempting to do with the EDA is review the Enabling Resolution of the Economic Development Authority. That's the resolution that was passed in the early 90s that forms the authority. What it's supposed to be doing, what its powers are. We would like to revisit that through the EDA and ultimately bring some recommendations to the Board to include concepts of even growing the authority of representation on the authority if the Board's willing to consider that. We had Brian Rutenstein for probation visit us at the last meeting. They'll be exiting the third floor here in April. What we plan on doing is actually getting some tours organized. It's a pretty good space. We'd like the Board to be able to see it, but also Department Eds as well and get some ideas going on what are the possibilities for the, for the space. And then we'll be starting that review process in the courthouse committee. We did receive a letter from Roy Smith, who is doing, as you know, he was our county surveyor of record and then went into doing some special duties and now metal and, metal and surveying is now our survey of record. He's ended his, those special duties with us, so we're certainly want to acknowledge his years of service and we do plan on, with his permission, bringing him back to recognize him. We received that letter after the event occurred or we would have had him come to the event and but I just wanna keep the Board in the loop on that. And the surveying company is very comfortable with taking on that network. I guess those are the things that I have right now.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the UKG. Mary, do you wanna talk a little bit about that or?
And there's a handout for the Board and then also on page 11 is where it starts at the back.
This was an item, and Dave, you're on courthouse, and what we said is this should go through courthouse, so, but the timeliness of it, I don't know why it got behind us, but we're, we're at where we're at, so.
So we're using ARPA funds to purchase the new HR payroll software equipment. These are enhancements for deferred comp, health savings plan, FSA, HAS. It's to automatically, it's just a software, but they have to build it into the program before
But let's, let's not call it enhancement, cause it's part of the program that's needed. We should have been included in the original price.
Yes, probably.
Because we can't run the programs basically without
Well, we could, but we'd be doing all of these entries manually.
Well, then we can't. I mean, basically, we can't.
Right.
So unfortunately, this should have been included in the
Original.
Original quote.
Right. But we're requesting approval, um, to.
Or the other option is hire another staff to input the.
I'll go for that.
Well, I mean, seriously, this is a lot of, lot of.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, it's a, it's really unfortunate that this is, was not included, really, because this is.
Yeah, necessary.
Yeah, it is necessary software.
We got it. We got some follow-up information after finance and, uh, Mary states that this is, um, very critical by what, April?
April first, is when we're going to start.
It's either today or. So I guess, what are we asking for? Kind of a?
Well, it's eight thousand dollars. We're asking you to be paid out of ARPA funds along with the other software that we purchased.
Can you motion that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to that.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Now, airport fueling station information.
Yes, and that's, I, I'd like to just, um, have the board just look at page forty-one. Um, that kind of summarizes the things that we're looking for. The airport commission did meet here recently. Um, Kelsey is in the audience. He's certainly here to answer.
Kelsey, why don't you may as well come up and.
But there are two items, um, and again, on page forty-one of your packet, uh, there's a parking lot project where we did receive significant, uh, grant funding, but there is a local cost partition mate, participation match of ten thousand eight, ten sixty-five. And then with the fueling system, again, received a seventy percent cost of the fueling station through a, a DOT grant, but the local participation cost is four thirteen, zero, two, eighty. Uh, we split that between the city and the county. And so, uh, we have a, um, half of that we would have to come up with. Uh, we are recommending, um, using ARPA funds for that. Uh, and, um, uh, like I said, the city has already approved their, uh, share at a, at a recent city council meeting. So that's the information I have for you, but I'll certainly defer to Kelsey if there's anything more you'd like to add.
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, yeah, in the packet, there was two memos. One was a memo from April of twenty twenty-two, which at the time we were working with engineer estimates of what we thought the cost was going to be for the parking lot improvement and the fueling station. Um, at that time, um, you know, I think we were, we were estimating a local, uh, shared being where between two hundred forty-seven thousand to four hundred and eleven thousand. By the time we actually got the, the projects out to bid, uh, the parking lot project actually came in a little bit less than those original engineer estimates. And again, with the federal grant, uh, we have a local cost participation of ten thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and sixty-five cents. Uh, the fueling system, however, came in, uh, quite a bit higher than the original estimates from a year ago. Um, so again, with the MINDOT grant of the full seventy percent, uh, with the MINDOT grant of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, we have a local share of four oh two, one ninety-two, fifteen. So between the parking lot project and the fueling system project, we have a local cost participation of four hundred and thirteen thousand and two dollars and eighty cents, which is slightly higher than what we had discussed in twenty twenty-two.
This kind of all relates to the total airport project actually underran. So the city and the county didn't end up putting as much local money into it.
Yeah.
Originally.
Uh, Commissioner Oakson and Commissioners, um, yeah, kind of at the end of my memo I mentioned, that was the reason for the request to come back to the city and the county is the runway taxiway project. Both the city and the county had kind of pledged a million dollars each for a two million dollar local share. Uh, because of the federal funding that was available for that project, we're currently seeing about one point two million dollars for a local share. So basically there's still money left of that original pledge to put towards the fueling station and the parking lot project.
You know, something I saw in this map, maybe you can flip to the map page. It says airport property line. Who owns the property, uh, where the greens, where the green is and is that still airport?
That's Highway ten right away.
So we're in, so all this in the, in the right way?
So the Highway ten right away is on the north edge of that.
North edge. We're, we're inside the right away.
The.
We're on the airport county property. Followed.
Okay, but that line, it says airport property line. The fueling station parking lot is on this side of it, so it's county property where. What? Okay, I'm looking at, I'm thinking of it the other way.
No.
I was upside down. Okay. Um, Kelsey, you know, in, in the dialogue here, it stated that some things about, um, you can't find equipment to purchase that's, that eligible for federal funding with airport to, for snow removal. Um, and then that, you know, because there's, they won't match it unless it's made. It hasn't so many percent of content in the US made. Um, and I think I mentioned this, but I mean, if if we can fi- fi- find those, I mean, I think if you, I don't know what, but I seriously try to find that so we can use airport funds to help offset this. And the second thing is I, I really want, um, some sort of reimbursement if it goes to the airport or back to the city and the county for some of the fueling. I, I think, um, I think we should be paid back some of this money because I don't, I don't think this should be just we're going to, you know, supplement that airport, that fueling station completely. That's my opinion.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I can, I can, I can address that. So in the past, part of the compensation for the airport managers, they get the, the fuel sale proceeds. Um, in the past, uh, kind of the fixed payment per month has been, it's twenty-five hundred dollars a month, so it's, uh, somewhat limited what we give them for a fixed amount and then what we pay them for snow removal and, um, mowing out there is kind of on the, a good bargain for the airport. In exchange, they get the fuel sales. That's part of their, their compensation. With the new fueling system, uh, knowing that we have the cost to, of depreciation and upkeep, we are adding a thirty cent flowage fee that will come back to the airport for ongoing maintenance costs. So that will be added now, once the new fueling station is put into a, in, in service.
So there'll be some money coming back to help fund this. Thirty cents per?
Per gallon.
Okay. Okay, so then hopefully we can, um, reduce our funding to airport in the long term.
I love your optimism. I, you know, I think, I think the point is to at least try to offset the cost of the fueling system, you know, the operating cost and then depreciation expense of the fueling station.
Okay, any other questions?
Just, Kelsey, did we get that final agreement on the, on the thirty cents with Harry Colter and, and the crew? I know we discussed and looked at it.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we did. Um, that was signed. Um, it doesn't go into effect though, until the new fueling station is, is up and running.
Okay, any other question? Um, which is the board?
I make a motion to approve, um, county's share of the, of the, I believe it's four oh two, one ninety-two, one fifteen, if that's right.
I'll second that. Okay, so is, did you, did the motion and the seconding up to that, half of that amount?
Yes, so it's half would be two oh six, five oh one, forty.
Do we need to mention anything about ARPA funds or?
Um, do you want to, do you want to indicate that this will come from the ARPA?
Yeah.
Fund balance or?
ARPA's the final pair, two oh six.
That'll be, yeah.
Yep, uh, half would be two oh six, five oh one, forty.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kelsey. I would, hopefully we can find some locally or United States made machinery to get some funding come back to us. Right. Um, Pat, do we, we talked about the opioid settlement, um, yesterday at length and, and Denise came in and had some. Um, we thought, um, there was no real time crunch on this, was there?
April eighteenth is when we would be decided. So we have had a couple more bit, um, um, a couple more board meetings. I did receive some additional information though, so with your permission, I can review that. So it starts on, uh, page forty-two. And so this is going to be our third opioid settlement opportunity. Um, and this one, and this was reviewed at finance. There's approximately just a little under twenty-four million that the state of Minnesota is, is receiving. Based on the percentages of each, um, county, we're estimating that we would receive approximately one point five million. We calculated it. Um, I.
Over two years.
Over two-year period. Yep, I was supposed to get to that. Um, we would, um, I went through the, the steps in the process. I mean, the first process for us is is to really sign that agreement. We get distributed the money not from the state but from an, from an entity called Brown Gru, which is a settlement administration firm. And so we'll have to sign that agreement eventually or prior to, uh, the required date and then we will get our allotment. I went through to see what we have to do post signing that. I'm not seeing any information about the requirements or how we need to use those funds. I do know prior or after signing the agreement, we do have to provide a lot of financial information, contact information, W nine forms, things like that. But as I go through the, uh, the FAQ sheet, it basically just outlines, um, um, the work we have to do just to get things signed and the paperwork we have to provide to receive the funds. There really isn't any direct information that I could find on how we can use the funds, um, differently from, let's say, the, uh, the other funds that we've received, like the Jansen settlement and things like that. So, which did require, um, having a committee, a public health committee, but that's involved with putting together a plan. Um, so at this time, we'll continue to gather information if the board would, um, not want to take action on this or, and what we'd be looking for is authorization for the, for the chair to sign. Um, we'll continue to do the research and then bring it back to the board as needed.
Yeah, we were thinking it, maybe the committee could look at it because there, in that document, which was very lengthy, had a lot of things that it should go to and how to, how to improve those, um, the opioid, the people's health, the, I mean, it was, it was just a lot. So I thought maybe human services should look at it because they're going to be the ones having to implement those requirements. So, um, if you, unless you wish to act on it, but I, I think it should go through your committee and have, have your supervisors look at it to make sure that that we are all understanding what the requirements are. But, um, and then it, right away, we didn't know the dollar amount, so we were like, if this is fifty thousand dollars, we're not, we're not interested, but that's pretty significant.
That's kind of a recommendation from finance yesterday is to have you guys look at it with Denise and.
And is.
Bring it forward.
Is all the information in the packet for the, the settlement?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's. Unfortunately, I read it all.
I think that's a good idea.
So we can table it till the next April meeting or the, the upcoming April fourth meeting?
Whenever, whenever you wish.
When, when is the next, uh, human services committee?
April fourth.
April eighth or?
Is that right?
It's the second Wednesday.
Whatever that's.
So then we would need to bring it prior to.
Well, you could, you could have a, another meeting with, just on this, on your topic, if you.
It could be.
I mean, if you're.
To schedule just a, a meeting specifically to talk about this?
You can have meetings anytime.
Otherwise, the next meeting would be the twelfth.
But at your, at your wish.
We have to have this by the eighteenth, right?
I believe that's the.
We probably should do it, the board meeting before.
So let's set up a meeting with Denise and supervisors before April fourth.
Yeah.
So we can discuss it.
Yep.
At the April fourth meeting.
Okay. We'll let you guys handle that.
Perfect.
Your committee and bring it back at when you can. NACO consideration.
Yeah, and that's on page one twenty-four. I provided some information. Um, one of the interesting things on, uh, NACO and it's, and it's in your, your documentation is, you know, a, uh, every, every year, a, a future president is approved and um, the next president up for national NACO is our, is a commissioner out of Ramsey County, Minnesota Commissioner, Mary Jo McGuire. Um, she, uh, traditionally, when, when a, a state's, uh, uh, commissioner becomes the NACO commissioner, it does create a lot of opportunity for committee appointments, uh, nationally. And so I wanted to bring that to the board's attention from a legislative standpoint and entertain the idea of uh, having someone, um, put in their application, uh, to be involved with NACO, uh, for this next year.
Richard?
I probably better stick with what I got, Mary.
Yeah. And, and the two, the two most important meetings are, uh, the legislative conference in March, which is where they set federal, uh, uh, legislation that's done in Washington DC. And then there's a national conference that is, uh, at different parts of the United States, and that's where they vote for their next president or their upcoming president. So, um, so I'm interested in, interested in knowing the board's, um, um, willingness to, uh, to proceed with uh, having a commissioner be involved in it.
Didn't we already have you, John, as a NACO?
Well.
This, yeah, I think we, we authorized John to be kind of the, the eyes and ears on it, but I think what, what is being asked today is if, if somebody wants to apply for one of those, um, committee seats, if we would support them financially when NACO or AMC do not fund those expenses. Because there's a lot of times when NACO or AMC will, if you're on the board, will fund those, will, will take care of your expenses, but they're in this, I don't know if it would. And, uh, I think that's what, there's no specific times or dates and, and it's not sure that one would be selected either, but.
Right, the AMC does choose some to serve and then other ones that, that will be Mary Jo McGuire out of Ramsey County would select some other ones, but.
So I think we're very fortunate. John has expressed interest in, in some of this and, and I, I think if he has that interest, um, there are committees that you can bring money back to your county if you, if you get on and get the rate. So, um, we're asking if the board's interested in supporting, um, John, if he wants to, if he gets.
If I did, I'm not sure which committee. I think that could have to be something decided, which would better most benefit Becker County.
I don't think we need to act on anything today, but I think we should let it, we should decide if we support that or not financially and, and I, I would, if you are, if you get appointed, I certainly would.
I did some past checking of, uh, Jack Swanson, Rose, the county commissioner. He served as chairman of AMC and he's been on some of those and he said it doesn't take as much time as you think. A lot of meetings can be done virtually now, but there's one meeting or something that you might have to attend in person, but.
And I didn't see any highway meetings in there. That would be your wheelhouse, but.
He said everybody wants to be on that one.
But, yeah.
I served as AMC transportation chair for, for a year and vice chair for several years, so.
And John has served on, yeah, has served on that. And, and I think the last person that we've had on NACO board or NACO committees was Carolyn Agbretson. Because she was, she's a former AMC chair and there you automatically serve on AMC or NACO, you're involved in NACO very heavily. So, um, uh, I talked to Todd Patzer, who was the, who was the former AMC chair, and he said that is, he said it's really, really good, the NACO conferences and, um, he's very supportive. Um, if anyone else is interested, I think, um, first step would get involved more in AMC, um, to get your feet wet in AMC and then, um, because then with, with John being on the board and, and chair of a committee at AMC, he's very well known and respected for, for those, um, committees he's been on, so. So, um, consensus is we, we support the, maybe we, um, maybe we draft a letter by the county supporting that, um, send it or give it to Mary Jo if, if, if needed and, um, if that's acceptable to the board, we can offer our support as a board, a letter of support for him.
Do, do we need to make a motion to financially?
Well, unless he gets, unless he gets on the committee.
Yeah, okay, so we, we can do that later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could come up later and then after his travel involved, I can come up other time also.
So we'll just, um, consensus, draft a letter for county support. Okay, thank you, John, for your willingness to do this because, um, while Jack Swanson said it's not a big time commitment, we all know every meeting that every, everything you add on is a big time commitment, so. All right. Um, Pat, anything else? Okay, finance, Mary?
Good morning again. I'm requesting approval, a motion to approve regular claims auditor warrants in over ninety days.
Entertained. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the license list. I did hand it out, um, since there was a. I did hand it out since there was an addition.
Post approve side door resort and 32 off sale, on off sale renewal.
I'll second that one.
Motion by John, second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Motion approve off sale renewal for Cormand Bioshock, Seven Sisters Spirits, Four Corners.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Erica to approve off sale renewals, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the Sunday on sale, Shady Hollow, We Fest, Detroit Lakes Country Club, Detroit Mountain Rec area renewals.
Sorry, John.
Okay, motion by Dave, second by John to approve the on sale with Sunday renewals, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have combination on off sale with Sunday renewal.
I'll make a motion to approve Icecrackin Lodge, Tri Lakes Roadhouse and Big Elbow Lake Lodge and Campground.
All, all seconds.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, temporary one to four day license for Detroit Lions.
Move.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a gambling permit for Cormand Lions with a Resolution 32, 232A.
We also have
Yep, yep.
The added one too.
Yep. Entertain a motion for
Move.
2A, motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the additional one, gambling permit 2G was it?
Yep.
Two, yeah.
2G, two, turn in poachers.
Move.
Motion by John, second by
I'll second.
Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Mary, could, are you going to send those out, those gambling permits? I know the Cormand Lions were looking for theirs right away, so.
As soon as I sign them, yeah, once they're approved, I sign them and they, yes, or they can come
I just said I would.
Yeah, yeah, otherwise we'll call them and they can come get them today. The next item we have is Resolution 3232B, Saltwin Lake Deed. This is property along the public access, we're establishing a boundary with Colin Bork, who is an adjoining owner. Both parties have done surveys, we did a quiet title action. Borks have returned their signed deed to us, now we're requesting to have the county board chair sign the deed to Mr. Bork, establishing the boundary.
Hey, this has been going on for how many years?
Since 1987.
And this is just part of that area, I mean, there, that whole beach is, is, this will help set up a, at least a starting point for.
Yep.
So Mary's been, Mary's been working hard on this for a long time. Not a lot of consensus out there on, but at least we got our part done and can move on. So entertain a motion to approve 2B.
So.
Motion by John, second by Richard, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the final item I have are the January reports, cash comparisons, sales tax and investment summary, requesting a motion to accept.
Okay, motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave to accept the cash comparisons and tax report and investment summaries, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Say, Mary, I just wanted to mention one thing that this is not on, but you have, you, I talked to you about the, you gave me that sheet about the fair. I think it was a email that you would, if I can find it here. It, it had to do with the, the fair ground of property, and you were asking for a survey or something or, or quiet. You, I think you had emailed to the attorney a quiet, tight, or quick claim deed. So I think, I'm just going off from what that, what you, what you had written on that page. If you want any outside legal advice on that, I think we, it has to come before the board, and I don't know what committee you want to put any of that through, but it should come through. If there's a, cause you're not going to do any line adjustments or in, in the attorney's office, we don't have that expertise, I don't think. But, yes. I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that should go, because this board has not had any official discussion on any of that, so just, just noted that, I have that paper that you had too, but anyway, just thought I'd mention.
Yes, that was something we were looking at last August and, yeah, it would go to a committee prior to.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far yet, so. Yeah.
Okay. Well, it was dated August 18th of '22, but you gave it to me, we, you had, we had a discussion outside the last week, so. Okay, thank you, Mary. All right, Human Services, Denise. Morning Denise.
Annual conference?
And any out-of-state travel, we always bring before the board, this out-of-state travel will be reimbursed through the WIC program, so it won't cost us any money. So it's a, and it's required by that program to continue on with it, so.
Cause, because of her position.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Erica, second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have a number of contracts for your consideration today, the first is the DHS CCA HCVS FMAP grant contract.
Hey, and this is a new contract, correct?
It is.
Okay. Okay, wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll second, second the motion.
We have a motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have the Lakeland Mental Health Contract, which we previously did a three-month extension. Now, this is the full year for 2023 contract we're bringing forward.
Okay, wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the Lakes contract, Lakeland.
I'll second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, and the Stellar Human Service Contract. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Stellar Human Services Contract.
I'll second.
Motion by, motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have a letter of support to Mahubi Atwa. The letter should be in your packet.
Okay.
Page 190.
Okay, and support of?
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And you have a personnel request.
That's correct, for replacement, for resignation.
Okay, this is a resignation repla, replacement of a full-time social worker, Resolution 2E. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Lastly, the claims for Human Services, Public Health and Transit.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Okay. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Um, John's
John.
Second. All right, anything else Denise?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I have on the agenda just the policies, and I know we have a work session at the end here. So I guess my question would be, as we proceed, does everybody have a copy of their policy with them? Does anybody need anything, so they're ready to go? Okay, so we'll go through it for the chairman at that time, but I would just like to make a couple comments, if I may, to the board, just very quick updates. I am coordinating currently with the, for the comp and salary studies, so we are communicating back and forth to get that started, so that's in process. And just wanted to update, I know there's been prior discussion about UKG and the rollout of that as well. And I'm just wanted to update the board that previously, when there's been systems updates, that they've utilized employees in different areas across the county to assist with the rollout of that. And we had a really good response from several of the employees that we reached out, we call them super users. So there'll be some training this week for them, to get them updated on the use of UKG, and they'll assist across the county in implementing that, because that's going to come up very quickly. And apparently, you know, I don't want to, I want to utilize what's worked before and not recreate. And what I'm being told is previously, when they rolled out systems, that that was, that had worked really well. So we did reach out and had really good response, so I just wanted the board to be aware of that. And lastly, I know previously there was a discussion about the turnout and the employee recognition as well. And I think several have already commented on that, and I just wanted to also comment that I'm pleased that the board was there and that it was a good turnout. And we're hoping to, now that we've done our catch-up, hoping to do that on a yearly basis, because I think employees need to be recognized. And lastly, just a shout out to Peggy from our office, she is the one that really did all the behind the scenes work in all the organizations, so just want the board to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you, thank you Peggy. Okay, Judy in IT. Looks like we're going to be right on schedule.
Good morning, I have three things in front of you guys, and it's three. The first one is the Vanguard appraisal annual renewal, this is a budgeted annual renewal for the software that is used by the appraisers. The second one, and that's 4,000
Let's do them one at a time and approve them, so we'll
Motion to approve, I'll second.
Motion by John, second, and Dave, second, that improve the Vanguard Apprais annual renewal in the amount of 4,050. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The second one is a 9,008 annual renewal for Microsoft. This is for the county server data center licenses, that's what runs all things like UKG. So I'm, I've got that for your approval too, and again, it was a budgeted item.
Hey, this is a Microsoft annual renewal in the amount of 9,008.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second it.
Second by Erica, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
This is a second Microsoft annual renewal, and this is for the backup, it's really software as a service for our backup of our Microsoft 365 environment, which would include email and OneDrive.
Okay.
Move.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Dave to approve the annual renewal for Microsoft and 9,980. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim?
Good morning Commissioners, I have two items for your consideration. First item is awarding of our weed spring contract quotes, we received two quotes this year. Low quote being LNM Road Services out of Yulin at a rate of 125 dollars per hour. They were our contractor in previous years, we are recommending approval or award to the LNM.
Move to C.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Richard to approve 2C, is that, is that contract, is that, do you bid it out countywide or is there zones?
It's countywide, and yes, we have a budget item, we, we essentially run our, up to that 25,000, I believe is our budget, fine item.
Right, I was just curious if we did it like blading, you know, if there are different zones, but, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, next item for your consideration is a capital purchase request, we have two pickups we would like to replace. We went out and got quotes from local dealers in the area, there's no state contract, so we found the two low quotes came in from Neerson and Nelson auto dealer in Fergus Falls, we were recommending going with the Chevrolet half tons from Neerson, as they have these in stock in their, in their dealer network. The deal, the Nelson ones would have to be ordered and would probably take a period of time to get those.
Okay.
Move to B.
Motion by Richard.
Sorry, John.
Second by John to approve purchase of two, two, 2023 Chevrolet half ton pickups in the amount of 86,180 plus tax, title and license. In that motion, did you want to
Would
offer the sale of the two remaining, that's what we discussed. There were, there were two vehicles that were going to sell on a public auction, so included in the motion to include the sale of the two at a public auction. That's all right with the motion makers. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
920 on the dot. Jim, when you go out, oh, thank you. Morning Kyle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First item of consideration, Resolution 03232D, commitment to study the Becker County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance. This is just follow-up from your prior commitment to go out for an RFP for our comp plan and to codify the ordinance.
This is just to go out for the RFP?
Yeah.
Yes, it's just a formal commitment to review the plan.
And RFP, you said we'll go out
This week.
This week?
Yep.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number 03232D to commitment to study a comprehensive planning and zoning ordinance.
Okay, motion by Dave.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Dave, second by Erica to pass Resolution 2D, and this is just to put out an RFP for quotes or proposals. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, the next two items at the guidance of County Attorney Mr. McDonald, Resolution 03232F, feedlot interim ordinance, we would like to table until the April 4th meeting.
I'm wondering Kyle, if we can have like discussion on what, what, Section 1 and Section 2 specifically, where it says all feedlots? If we can have some discussion among the boards of, of what
What our intent is?
Yeah.
I would certainly like that direction, and Section 1 would be a moratorium on the creation or establishment of a new feedlot. Section 2 would be an exam, expansion of an existing feedlot. Also something that should be discussed or some direction would be nice is the number of units.
Yeah, cause when we did, so let's, let's just back up a little bit, when we did this originally, we just wanted, we put a number on it so it not do affect ongoing operations.
200.
And I, and did this, did this go through your committee at all?
This did not, this interim ordinance, basically I was under the assumption of the direction of the board that we were looking at one and not looking for a recommendation from them.
Oh yeah, that's, that's fine, I'm just curious.
The idea yesterday, if you're inquiring about that meeting, was basically to bring the PCA in and educate our two commissioners on the, on the committee, as well as the committee themselves, what the role the PCA actually plays, what their requirements are.
Okay, cause I, I think, I, you know, I read this too, and I had this, probably the same concerns that many people in the audience have, that this would hinder current operations, and that's not our intent.
That's why I have it highlighted, so everybody would catch that, that if you would either.
Yes, I, I was, I was very concerned with this also, so.
So I, I would recommend to take out Section 2.
Okay.
So that there would not be any temporary restrictions on expansions of existing feedlots. And I think even looking at Section 1, if we want to put, looking at what the definitions of, in our zoning ordinances, we, we define what a commercial feedlot is and what agriculture feedlot is. And I, we have, commercial feedlot is defined as 500 animal units, and I, I think it would be appropriate if we're looking at doing a potential temporary restriction on any commercial feedlot, so any feedlots that are proposing 500 animal units or more.
Yeah, and just to be clear, any, any feedlot that cannot maintain a vegetative cover, one animal unit or 10 or 500 or 1,000 is considered commercial. You have to be able to produce the majority of the feed to be able to produce the majority of the feed and then, and get rid of a majority of the manure to be considered an agricultural feedlot. Once you, even if you are able to produce that manure, or feed and get disposed of that manure, over 500, you automatically become commercial. But commercial is basically defined as not maintaining a vegetative cover. So you could be commercial at 300.
So you have to make sure you have the land available to?
Right. You just automatically go from ag to commercial at 500. But you still can be commercial under 500, just to be clear.
Gotcha.
Boy, I think this helped us a lot because I think we were, I don't know about the rest of the board, but yeah, there were some concerns over how this was written because that's not what our, my intent, or now the board's intent was, so.
I still have a little hangup about acting on a, excuse me, a resolution and not having a public hearing on it and let the stakeholders on both sides comment.
I would agree, but I was asked if we could act today, so it's just before you sold that.
This time, I can't really support this resolution because we haven't, to me, gone through the proper steps.
I agree. And I, and I think that's what, what I would, because we're going to have to, do we, do we print the resolution for the public hearing? Like, what, what do we put in, when we, when we post for a public hearing, what do we post?
You would post this.
So, so that, that's why I'm bringing it up, is I want, when we post it, I want to make sure that what we're posting is what our intentions are.
So 39434 allows in an emergency situation for an interim ordinance, if you have acted in good faith to study the plan, which we have done, and you plan or intend to hold a hearing. I was asked if this could be that meeting. So, and all due respect, game prepared. If you don't want to act on it, that's certainly fine. I would agree that they, all the stakeholders here should have the option to speak as well.
My phone rang all day yesterday.
Mine did too, till 10:30.
7:30 last night. Some of the guys aren't here, some of them are here. Big concerns with any restrictions. A lot of them said the same thing, that we have pollution control, we got our planning committee, and they, you know, there's a lot of money invested here. And now we know what a acre of land costs now. And so one of the, one of the, one of the guys called me because he just purchased some land, and now he's very concerned that he's not going to be able to pay for the land. And I don't know how many farmers are in that situation with young, younger ones coming up. And, and they're making plans to expand or, or maybe go across the road or whatever. And I, I, it's a lot of strong...
Well, I, I agree. And this was not, this, what's in this board was not put in here by anyone on the board. This, what this packet.
We were asked for an interim ordinance though with no, I mean.
There was no guidance and, and it's more than what, obviously not with anyone on this board was.
If I were to pick a number, it would be arbitrary, right? So I mean, I obviously need some direction. And that's why yesterday, having that discussion, both John and Erica were there, I asked what questions we are targeting that the MPCA is currently not. You know, you have environmental review, which is triggered at 1,000 animal units, which the PCA would be that regulatory government unit to oversee that. So to me, the state has established the threshold that at 1,000 units, you may have environmental concerns. Beneath that, and again, yesterday, what I'm trying to establish is what we're targeting, what are the concerns? It's somewhat difficult for me to pursue a feedlot ordinance when I'm not sure what the feedlot is causing a problem. We've all talked about corporate farming, and what that number is, I'm not sure. If somebody could help identify that.
I think, I think that's the plan of the study and plan of understanding this. And I think a lot of the farmers in those areas are worried about these big corporate farms coming in, and they drive up prices of adjoining land too. There's no one here that's trying to stop this, the, the farmer that lives on the land that wants to expand his operation. I don't think there's anyone here that wants that. But when you have a corporate farm that, I mean, outside, huge, I mean, we're talking the, the big ones now. And I, and I know if, if any farmer here put in an application for their own use, I don't see, unless the neighbor, unless it's in the middle of Lakes area, I don't see that that's going to have a, this impact that a, a big operation would, such as down, you get sou- southern Minnesota where there's, you know, 10, 10 corporate confined animal units in the same, you know, within a few miles. Then you start talking, local farmers can't afford the land then. It's, it's, so there's a lot of those concerns. And how are you affecting your neighbors? How are you affecting the townships? I don't think these are problems that can't be worked out. I, I'm willing to put the farmers in those areas on the committee to help guide what they want. Because that's, that's who's being affected. It's not, it's not most, it's the people in those areas that are going to be. And that's the, basically, the north, northwest and western part of the county. I, I don't.
But it's harder and harder for any of them to make a living without growing.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
You know, so.
I don't, I don't disagree with the growing and the diversifying. That's what I want, I would rather have them write the, write what the restrictions they want. I mean, that's their area, that's their livelihood. That's where, that's where the input should be. So.
I'll tell you, they're, yeah, they're very concerned about.
But you get neighbor farmers not wanting the growth, the, the confined animal unit growth and having, you know, seven, eight, 10 barns in the, in an area. So I mean, there are concerns. But again, I think the people that are affected by it should be looking at how they want to manage it.
Yeah, I agree that we should bring, they, they, they all have something to say. And, and, yeah, it'd be nice if, if we could, if they could sit down and put their input in.
And I think that's what the professional service that we just went out, we're going to ask for proposals, will, will assist as well. They'll have those stakeholder meetings near those, near those facilities that, so.
Do we need a motion to table this to further?
We'll ask.
So which side you're on, my recommendation is sure that that's 10-day notice. Whether you want it at the next board meeting or a special meeting as a public interim ordinance at that time.
Can we, can we modify the interim ordinance to not, to, I mean, what are we worried about? Confined animal unit properties here? Improvements? We're not worried about expansions of organ, or current farms.
No, where we would take Section 2 out, right?
And the other, I would also just like to touch base on one more thing for everybody in this room. I, I did get some calls that we have nothing in place to, I, I guess, control a feedlot right now, which I can't support because we have a conditional use permit. And no matter if you write 10 pages of regulations, they're all going to be different. We see that with resorts or gravel mines or what have you. And the point of a conditional use permit is to identify through the public hearing process by notifying a PCA, townships, soil and water, all of those professionals of what this particular application may affect. And at that time, if you support it, you can put conditions on that approval. You have the ability to deny or approve any application that comes before you. The best land use attorney in the, in the state will tell you that. It's just that you're taking everything into consideration. But again, in going back to where we were yesterday, if I could request maybe that some type of ad hoc committee maybe be created specifically just for feedlots, we used to do that some time ago in the zoning ordinance advisory committee, if we could have individuals that were specific to the knowledge of this. I know Jeff Lewis is in the room. He's a, a former MPCA employee, someone like him, a couple of these farmers that would probably be much more productive. Because of individuals we have yesterday, they're just, none of us are educated on feedlots.
Well, I, I think that's exactly what we want to do.
And is that what we would do with our, essentially with our comprehensive plan?
Kind of, but it's going to be on a much larger scale. And I just think this issue needs to be tackled much sooner. There's a, clearly a lot of interest here.
I think ad hoc should be looking at this type of resolution before we move it forward.
I agree.
And make sure we get all the stakeholders' input, both sides, whatever.
But as well as an ordinance, if you so choose to implement one, I think would be, it was said earlier that, I believe you said, Mr. Chair, that they let the individuals out there in the area develop what they seem, deem fitable for a restriction.
Yeah. I don't think we're trying to curtail, I don't think we're trying to curtail anything really. I just think we want to take into account adjoining land or adjoining people that live out there, what their concerns would be, and try to address those before we, but I would support the ad hoc, that, that you just form an ad hoc committee. And, and I would suggest that if anyone, well, we obviously have interest, try to find some people that are interested in the room that maybe you can coordinate and not take the whole room, but get, get some feedback there and.
I know they do have ideas because they've given to me, given them to me. I mean, a lot of them are on the same side of the page as what I think they think is, is large. I mean, I've heard some people, you know, say 5, 900 animal units is way too many. But I, I think the majority of them think that 500 is not nearly enough, and maybe 1,000 or two is a more.
And it all depends on what your facility is. And it depends on how much, you know, acreage you have with that. So it's, it's not just, it's not an easy, easy thing to draw. And I think those that know the business could assist in, in putting something on paper. So we have some guidance anyway, so.
And I think John said it best yesterday, our food has to come from somewhere. So I think we do, I would, I mean, I support farmers and I support feedlots. I just want to make sure that we have our zoning ordinances aligned with them.
Okay. So do you need any direction from the board other than, so you want to form a?
Ad hoc.
Do we want to, do want to authorize planning zoning to form an ad hoc committee with, with expenses?
Sure.
For those members that are, that you choose, that maybe are approved by the, the ordinance committee? The ordinance committee representatives are Erica and John.
Mm-hmm.
So if you guys form a committee and, and can authorize expenses for those, Pat, or would, you know, per diem?
I mean, it's going to be people that are already on the planning commission, that's, it's already in place.
It would be probably.
But if there are others, yeah.
There'll be some others. And I think Kyle can kind of field some of those people and be the contact.
Yep. Well, let's, let's entertain a motion to form that committee with, with the expense per diem as, for those on that committee, the same as the.
Ordnance committee members.
Ordnance committee members.
I make the motion.
Motion by John, second by Richard. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then you can, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said we, our ordinance with what we've done already is, is, is keeping new confined animal units at, from, from approval at this time.
Well, and this was back in November, if you recall, that motion was made of last year. So the interesting thing about it is that was not on the agenda, but the board did make that motion in the spirit of 39434. But at that time, you really, there was no direction or support for community-based comprehensive planning at that time. What 39434 says is, is we'll, we'll put an interim ordinance together and give us the time so that we could do land use planning. We can have public hearings. We can do stakeholder meetings. So if, you know, it, you'll have to, I think it's weak, but what I would say is, there was an effort certainly to do that, but it was in the spirit of, I think, that statute without probably even knowing that that statute existed. So at this time, if you're going to move forward with this committee, that's perfectly fine. But just keep in mind, there is no interim ordinance out there right now. If you have an appropriate, just keep that in mind.
And my, my understanding is, and I don't remember the statute right offhand, that says that you have to have a public hearing. So a moratorium or interim ordinance is a change in the ordinance, which requires a public hearing. So, so until we have a public hearing, we don't have an interim ordinance in place. So there's nothing for.
Respectfully, I disagree with Commissioner Jefferson. 39434 does not say that. So it clearly says that if there is a good faith effort to conduct studies and it includes and it references comprehensive planning, that the, that the board, if they consider this to be a public health, safety and welfare situation, can approve it in the ordinance. Lots of other statutes out there that do deal with municipalities and their interim ordinances, but the county specifically on point is 39434. And, but like I said, you could continue as you're doing, but I think there may be some risk there. And you do have an attorney here. He certainly can defend whatever the board would like to do. But clearly 39434 does not require that public hearing. But once you were to pass that interim ordinance though, the fact that you are doing comprehensive planning, that includes stakeholder meetings, that includes public hearings, that includes those types of things to, to have a very equitable participation from the public. So certainly, we could talk more about that. But it's, the interim zoning is very much on point, I'm meaning 39434. And it doesn't list any other links to any other statutes as a statute would if they wanted you to conduct public hearing and things like that. What, what the statute says is what.
You know, thank you, Pat. At, at the end of the day, as we get more educated on this ourselves and, and this ad hoc, maybe, maybe pollution control has enough restrictions on, on the water quality part of it. I mean, maybe they are, maybe we've got that part of it covered. But maybe we need to look at specific things to Becker County, especially when we, for, for population county, you know, so there might be some specific things that we can look at in, in our county rather than, pollution control might have the water quality handled. I, I know I'm not concerned with application on farmland of, of manure or in, in, in any of the operations. Because it's more valuable than, than any dry fertilizer. So farmers aren't going to overapply it. It's, it's a, it's a very good commodity. So that part I'm not worried about.
And what was talked yesterday is it's more about the land use of where, where they.
Where these new.
The opposition has always been a lot in regards to land application though.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yes. And that, so I'm saying, maybe we don't need to look at part, you know, pollution control has those parts covered.
That's kind of what I wanted to identify yesterday. I mean, we don't work with them hand in hand in, in regulating feedlots because we've had one expansion in my tenure here since 16, and this is the first new one.
Right.
So, yeah, just like you said earlier, I'm being educated on it just as much as the next guy. But when they're talking about their manure management plans and only allowing certain amount of manure depending on the crop and all of that, they're, they're way ahead of the, any ordinance that I can write.
Yeah. I, I'm, again, I, and I said this before, I'm not worried about overapplication on the land. It is too valuable to, to over, to, to put more than what's needed for your crop. So maybe, maybe parts of this don't need to be changed at all. But maybe there are just some things to, to protect, you know, neighbors. I don't know. But I think we're learning this as we go, and it's a, it's a good project. Again, if, if there's one confined animal unit, I was, when we talked about the one that, that got passed, I was over in Holly and, and over by those farms. And you, you could smell animals, but it wasn't a, wasn't a overbearing smell. And I know the farm down in Becker Cups, in the western Becker, you don't even know it's there for the most part. So if they're done well.
I live on the same root as one, and it's about two times a year when they're.
Applicat.
Stirring, stirring and spreading, but you smell it.
And I have, I have a friend that had a manure pit down by Lake Eunice, and he had stir it on Fridays every, every summer, every weekend of the summer, just to educate the people coming down. Kind of laughed about it, but anyway.
But I think Commissioner Nelson, moving forward with that ad hoc committee with stakeholders. And I still, you know, just transparency to, I'd want some type of public hearing before we have some type of interim.
I think probably a, a public hearing would probably be necessary.
We're representing these people and not just those five up here, so.
100%. And that public hearing prior to that ad hoc committee meeting may be the most beneficial because then we're going to have testimony to discuss.
So when.
Pretty arduous when you look at them. I don't want to make them any worse.
So when are we, when are we proposing having a public hearing?
Well, I think your ad hoc committee has to form and, and get those members.
It could be a couple of months on the road before we get to.
Yeah.
Work on it, so.
With that, we need a motion to table items two, items two and three, or three, item three, the resolution.
Correct.
And motion by John, and I'll second. I'd like that just table indefinitely till brought back. So that's okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming and showing interest today. We, this was not, I think the whole board, this was not what we wanted, and it was put on, but we have to start somewhere. And, and now we've found our starting spot. Roger, you have a comment?
We know we got 37.
We know we got thirty-seven township, the majority of them have uh, animals. For those that do have that, do already have a feedlot license or permit. Okay, my question would be, if you get this moratorium, is it gonna overrule the one that tribe is trying to come about? Put in force up?
I'm not sure your question, we, you know, the. If, if we have a moratorium on specific. Becker County wide, it would, it would supersede the townships. Um, it would not have any, we don't have any relationship with the tribe on that. Well, we, 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 there's nothing, there's no way we can, I mean, they have their, they have their.
Work with them too, if they don't have, that you can convince them that they don't have stronger uh, moratorium than what the county is gonna put out there.
Well, they already have theirs in place, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep, thank you, and that's Roger Winter.
For the record, yeah.
Township, uh.
Waiting you the twenty-fourth of April, that's when we will have our annual meeting for the Township Association.
And Roger, you're still the chair of the Township Association.
Yes, yes. But I do agree with John, this uh, ad hoc committee is the right way to get started.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Okay.
Uh, just for a point of order, you, you have a motion to second, Commissioner, that you approved, uh, for, uh, for one. But you still have an outstanding item to vote on, you wanna update the vote?
Okay. We had that on the table?
You didn't motion the table, and then you, but you didn't, and then you did a motion for ad hoc committee, but you didn't vote.
Okay, so we've motioned and ta- we've motioned a table and that went through, okay, um, all those in favor of the ad hoc committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, madam. Okay, and thank you all for coming and, um. Hope you know that, that we had no intention of shutting down expansions of, of uh, current farms. Um, we are going to go into closed sessions, Willis, if you have a comment? I think we have something on the books that if it was challenged, it would be somewhat defective, but maybe not totally effective. And we're going on from there, is, they would, it would, if we try to enforce it, then the courts would probably have to decide. If it was fought, right now, we wouldn't address it, if we were forced to, then we'd have to.
But we still have the ability to address it through conditional use permit.
Yes, correct.
So, clear as mud.
Are we gonna have a break?
Um, we are going into closed session to, to discuss, and I will read that. Yes. Yes, we'll go into br- we'll have a break and then go into closed session.
Yes.
So we're gonna go into closed session after we have a short break. Get on to, let's get on to our closed session, and we need a motion to go into closed session. Um, and I'll read the closed session, motion to close the meeting pursuant to statute twelve, thirteen D oh five subdivision three B. Based on attorney-client privilege to discuss potential impending legal action with Teamsters Local Three Twenty. Is there a motion? Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, all those in favor signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And who are we?